Let us bring the, uh, City of Spartanburg City Council meeting to order. We will stand for a moment of silence and then be led by the pledge of allegiance. Amen. Mayor Pro Tim, do you mind leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have item three, approval of the minutes of the August eleventh, twenty twenty-five city council meeting. Some move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Ayes have it. Also, item four, approval of the agenda for the August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting.
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Ayes have it. Item five, we have public comment. We have a packed house tonight, so we have quite a few public comments. The way this work, ladies and gentlemen, you have two minutes. Once you come up, I'm gonna call you by name, come up and give us your address, please. And your two minutes will start after that. We do have quite a large crowd tonight. Please be mindful of the applause and all that. Everyone have great points to make, but we still try to keep everything civil here. So let's just respect one another's and their opinions, all right? Thank you. Colby King.
Hi, good evening. I am Colby King, six five seven Mabel Street, over in Converse Heights. I'm a resident of the city, an educator, a parent, and a founding board member of Siren. My friends and I and Siren are asking you to pass a hate crimes ordinance. Forty-eight states have a hate crimes law, but not South Carolina. Still, twenty-one municipalities across South Carolina have passed one, including two cities and two counties in South Carolina that have passed an ordinance in just the past couple of months. I was excited when city council passed the healing resolution five years ago. As an educator in the community, I appreciated seeing civic commitment to mending and strengthening this community. My wife and I moved to Spartanburg six months later, in part because of what that resolution said about this community. We saw Spartanburg as a diverse and dynamic community with leaders who were willing to speak about how that diversity strengthens the community. It has been five years since the healing resolution. Leaders don't seem to be speaking about these issues in the same way. Many things have changed in those five years, but one thing that has not is our need for leaders who will work to protect the people of Spartanburg and strengthen our community. Please put consideration of an ordinance on an upcoming council meeting agenda. You've got twenty-one models to work from twenty-two if you look at the language Siren provided. Passing a hate crimes ordinance would follow through on the promises you made in passing the healing resolution. It would protect people, express values that make Spartanburg strong, and would follow through on your promises. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy McB Smith, Jr.?
Good evening. Roy Smith, Roy Macby Smith, Jr., there on Mike Mahmoud's two oh three Westminster Drive, uh, in Converse Heights. I come to talk to you about the, uh, the clock, uh, Morgan Square design. I think that there can be a compromise in this solution and would appease most everybody. I think to tear down the clock would be a disservice to the twenty thousand people who, uh, paid to have the clock and their name on there. Myself and probably another city council member may have their name on the clock, too. I, um, I provided a handout, uh, that has four pages of pictures. One of them shows the original, you know, Morgan Square, uh, way back when there was no trees or any, you know, parking or just buggies and horses. And then I, uh, the same pic, the same page has, uh, a current picture of the, an aerial of where the photo, the top clock tower is now, along with the pad, uh, traffic patterns. I show that because you can see around the clock, there's a significant amount of landscaping that could be altered to allow for the three parking spaces that they require for their landscaping, for their redesign of Morgan Square. I think if you took rid of, got rid of the landscaping, you would have ample room for that diagonal parking. Uh, page two shows the, uh, clock tower facing west. Uh, significant space shows more about the landscaping. Also, uh, the small teardrop island that remains in the new proposal with the two trees, which would, uh, as they plan to make a corridor in from the west to downtown. I think those trees kind of block everything anyway, but, uh, the trees can be removed, too. But I do believe that the clock and the, uh, and the bell that are involved with the clock are so important to this neighborhood, or this community.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, that's my point.
Thank you. Thank you for your material. Stanley Case?
My name is Stanley Turner Case. I live at one ninety Westminster Drive, Spartanburg, South Carolina, two nine three oh two. I'm coming to speak on behalf of the people who'd like to preserve the clock tower, just as, uh, Roy Macby Smith has spoken. Anyone in Spartanburg County that is named Jones, or Smith, or Turner, or Case, is most probably my cousin. My family ran the Case Brothers Piano Company, and anybody named Macby or McCoy is probably my life cousin. So I have many relatives here. I, I think that Morgan Square is an important thing. For the family, I have a little excerpt here about, uh, the role of Henry Turner, who was a, in, an ancestor of ours out of Cherokee Springs. And this comes, uh, from the, uh, a message on, from an AI computer. Says, "Role of Henry Turner." Henry Turner was a local farmer who played a crucial role in supporting Morgan's troops. He barbecued a herd of beef cattle for the soldiers at Hannah's Cowpens, provided much-needed sustenance. This act of generosity helped boost the morale of Morgan's men before the battle. The battle was a decisive American victory. Morgan's forces defeated approximately one thousand British and loyalist troops. The engagement marked a turning point in the Southern Campaign of the Revolutionary War, demonstrating the effectiveness of American militia when properly led. And basically, uh, this is a historical monument, and it's something that the city did. Many people, including my cousin, Randy Case, Randolph Hollerith Case, who, uh, went to school with some of the people here, paid money to keep the clock tower up. And so, basically, I'm here on behalf of the neighborhood, on behalf of my family, to see that a compromise has worked out. I think it'll be quite easy for there to be a way to get down West Main toward Ball Park.
Thank you, sir. Tony Tanner?
Good evening, council members. Uh, I am Tony Tanner, one twenty-eight Clemson Street. It's wonderful to see you all this evening as we approach this five-year anniversary for the unity resolution. What lies ahead for our city? The city has recognized Juneteenth by putting it into the city's holiday calendar, passed proclamations for LGBTQIA+ month, and recently adopted a proclamation for National Mental Health Month, which all have intersectionalities. The city is also the first in the city of South Carolina to be a part of GARE, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. The city also partnered with Wellville, my old job, on health equity work. Our newly inducted Spartanburgers teams represent a variety of demographics, just like our residents and business owners do. Additionally, um, we are home to five different colleges and universities with students who seek to feel safe and welcomed in our community. Among our council, five representatives from five different demographics. Hate crimes happens here in Spartanburg, whether it is coded that way or not. On December twenty twenty-three, at the Circle K on the east side, District Two, by my residence, in twenty, also in twenty twenty-four, upstate Pride, which was most current incidences. One is too many. Passing a hate crimes ordinance will help keep these diverse groups safe and send a clear message that harming others based on their identity is unacceptable. I urge you to pass a Roy C. Henderson Hate Crimes Ordinance at an upcoming council agenda. As my colleague Colby says, there are twenty-one existing models to reference, twenty-two if you use Siren's suggested language. That is about, it's not just about politics here. It's about values which are dignity, safety, and the respect for every Spartanburg resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. George Loudon?
Thank you. My name is George Loudon. I reside at one seven six Connecticut Avenue in Spartanburg, South Carolina. I thank the council for this opportunity to voice my thoughts on a proposal to move the Spartanburg count clock tower, which, as I understand it, is protected by the Heritage Act signed by the governor. I also understand that Wesley Stoddard had submitted an attorney general's opinion two weeks ago, supporting this position. I support the position to retain the clock tower in the Morgan Square area, and I believe it can be incorporated into the vision of that space the city is proposing. A little background, I've lived in cities, towns, and villages within the United States, from Syracuse, New York, to Grand Rapids, Michigan, to Yakima, Washington, and wandered European streets from Munich to London and Glasgow. Wherever my life and travels have taken me, there's been one common denominator I encountered, the sacredness and of tradition and the celebration of place. All peoples recognize the importance of acknowledging their history and preserving its artifacts. If, and I say if, the city deems it necessary to move the current location of the clock tower, then I propose to do so within the design framework currently developed or developed for the Morgan Square area. With that in mind, I measured the existing count tower structure and pulled what information I could find on what the city would, would look, what the city would like Morgan Square to look like. I located the illustrated plan as the cover sheet for the area and rendering of the proposed hotel as the second sheet on the corner of Spring and Main. Now, this, these, the scales may be off because I didn't have access to them, but I'm continuing anyway. Since I did not have access to scales in the image, I decided to make my own scale based on a relationship with the size of cars and the surrounding rendered on the illustration. I took the average length of a US automobile at fifteen feet and measured the base of the clock tower at nine foot and five inches to come up with a proposal for the city to consider. The walk-through opening of the clock tower is forty-seven inches, which could be aligned with proposed sidewalks in this illustration. If the illustration plan is accurate, the clock towers could be placed in the southwest corner in either one or two different positions, alternate positions. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. And please consider relooking it in conjunction with aligning it to the existing proposed sidewalks.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Frances Loudon?
My name is Frances Loudon, one seventy-six Connecticut Avenue, and I'm in support of keeping the clock. I taught first grade at Pine Street for a long time, didn't teach, uh, Jamie, but I could've. Anyway, my kids were so excited about collecting the pennies. We even took a field trip downtown so they could see. And I just, George and I, when we come in from the west side, seeing that clock, it means a lot. You know, and it's unique. When we travel around, we like to go in little towns and see the uniqueness. I like that little island. You know, I don't want to be in urban city. I don't want to be like Greenville. You know, I want our own, you know, just our own thing. And I hope you consider at least keeping it in that plot, even if you have to move it back. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Tony U. Banks?
Hello, my name is Tony U. Banks. I reside at one twenty-four Gardensy Lane in Spartanburg, South Carolina, two nine three oh six. I've talked to you a couple of times about going down to the location of the clock tower and, uh, seeing some different things that have been brought up. This past week, I went down again, and I done some measurements. The measurements that I take, hey, I took were from the clock tower to square up the property that is considered where the hotel and the other building would be located. From the measurements I gained, the only thing that will be gained is nine hundred and eighty-seven square foot surface space. Nine hundred and eighty-seven square foot. That's all that's gonna be gained from the way I measured. We will be losing nineteen roadside parking spaces that are very much needed. Twenty-five spaces that are within that fixed area that the Marriott is using now. Two hundred and, uh, two thousand three hundred and forty square feet of green space, and that is the space, not where the Herald Journal was, but the space beside of it. There are thirty trees that are mature that, if this is taking place and everything is built, I hope that those mature trees can be replanted somewhere else in the city. Uh, I think it's very important to do that. So in my closing, I think nine hundred and eighty-seven square feet is not worth the cost of what everything's scheduled to cost. A hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, I think, last time the clock was moved. So it's estimated that it'll be triple that to move it again, uh, and it was not that long a distance it was moved. So two, uh, two thousand four hundred and people and above have, uh, signed a petition requesting the clock tower not be moved, and I ask that y'all take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Abbott?
Thank you, Paul Abbott. I am a resident of the city at one eleven North Bennington Drive. I'm also the, uh, Republican candidate for County Council District Three, which covers a large portion of the city of Spartanburg. And as you can imagine, the last six weeks, I've spoken to a lot of people, and everyone that has expressed an opinion regarding this, the clock moving, uh, has been in opposition of the moving of the clock. So, and, but again, of course, not everyone has that as their main issue, but the ones who did make a statement to me regarding that, was in opposition of moving it. So I just offer that simple information to you, ask you that you consider that whenever you are deliberating and making your final decision. I appreciate the time to speak and appreciate y'all's services to the city.
Thank you. Bill Tillison? Bob, I'm sorry. We clapping, we can't hear the next person coming up, folks.
I didn't hear my name.
I didn't think so.
I'm gonna take a little different perspective on the clock, if you don't mind. Those of us who have lived in Spartanburg for many years, almost seventy-three in my case, have been given an invaluable gift called perspective. Long-term perspective outlasts short-term and even long-term plans a lot of times. It outlasts money and influence and almost always outlasts paid experts who believe they have all the best answers. Long-term perspective remembers so many of the unrealized plans that were put on the table to be acted upon by decision-makers. Who in here remembers the multiple opportunity-blocked plans that out-of-town firms pitched to fill a big void when the Andrews Building fell? I know none of you were on city council at the time, but we all remember what took place there. Killed several workers after a failed plan of implosion. It took a Spartanburg native with perspective to finally build a beautiful corporate building on that spot years later. Long for, long-term perspective also remembers plans that were actually realized, but failed to live up to the promise of planners who reinvented old ideas from other areas. No one can predict the future adequately, but once again, planners without local perspective, who will not live out their lives in Spartanburg, do not have a long-term vested interest in their plan. The most obvious was an attempt in the nineteen seventies to save downtown retail by closing two blocks of Main Street, making it a pedestrian mall. City officials, downtown merchants, they all believe creating an open-air mall with convenient backstreet parking would be the salvation of downtown retail. Wrong plan for the wrong time. The only part that had lasting impact on Spartanburg was building the clock tower, and it was relocated to its current site when Main Street was reopened to traffic.
Mr. Tillison, that's gonna be your time.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you, sir. Good call. Mr. Tillison, you have that already mailed out. Email that to us, the entire, uh, piece. Thank you, sir. James Jones?
James A. Jones, three three six Marion Avenue, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The Danny Morgan Clock Tower is our tower. It was built by the people of Spartanburg. Twenty thousand citizens, as you've heard, gave their pennies, nickels, and dimes. Children lined up to donate their name so their names could be written into history. And now developers want it moved? And does this council listen to the developers, or do they listen to the people? You didn't ask the people, you didn't get consent. You cannot put and should not put profit over people. That's not leadership, that's betrayal. This is more than wrong. It may even be unlawful. You got the Heritage Act, you've heard about it. But even more than that, it's about respecting your people. Respect people who built it. Respect the children whose names are carved into its foundation. To move or to destroy it is to rob these children and their legacy to the developers. The clock tower belongs to us, not to you, not to the developers, to us. So hear this clearly. To move the clock tower is not progress. It's not the Spartanburg we love. It's theft, and it will not stand by, and history will not look well at you for doing so. As I remind you, the first time you took the gavel as mayor, four years ago, I ask you, why would you try to prevent homeowners from having their homes rented as Airbnb, stealing from homeowners to profit developers and hoteliers? They have their own people to market for them and to cheerlead for them. You were elected to represent the people, not the developers, not those hotel owners. Listen to the people. I pray you do. Thank you.
Kimberly Branch? Kimberly? You didn't hear? I'm, I'm sorry. Good evening.
It's good to see you again.
Good to see you as well.
I know you're about tired of me.
No, we're not, not at all.
Especially the city manager over here. I'm here to address, um, the council again and city manager. Latest petition as of four twenty today, we have confirmed twenty-two thousand four hundred and twenty-two supporters for the downtown Spartanburg clock tower to remain where it is. If we allow this to continue to happen like it happened in seventy-nine, when, or eighty-nine, when it was moved, after it had been standing only ten years, when does it stop? In another fifty years, which we won't be here, it won't matter, but it matters to our children and our grandchildren. We're leaving a legacy, we're leaving a heritage. Our names are engraved in there, or inscribed in there for a reason. We were barely old enough to vote. We were freshly out of high school when it was last moved. We didn't have the protection of the South Carolina Heritage Act then, and I pray, um, as others here, that we're a badge in support for the clock, that, um, that you consider that. So, um, we have, we're working with our senator, our House representatives. We have a letter which we handed in last week, or the last meeting, uh, two weeks ago. And we understand that we may, as we were told, as we were leaving, to just sue the city. We don't want to sue the city, sir. We wanna, we wanna kind of compromise, find some kind of compromise to work, to keep our clock, keep our heritage, but bring in development. We're not here to say no to development or growth in our county or in the city, but we don't want to destroy what we have. And it is, um, I do also have proof that it was built under the bicentennial clock, uh, committee back then. So I will leave these items.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments as well. Item six. Item six, boards and commission appointments. Ms. Kristi Lindsey, city clerk.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. And before you this evening, we have two individuals who have been recommended to be appointed to our boards. Um, one is for our Board of Zoning and Appeals. The, uh, recommendation is that Guy Harris be appointed to this board. And for the Public Safety Board, the committee is recommending that we, when, be appointed to this board. Um, and so I will look to you for, um, direction.
Do we need any other information, council? We'll recommend a motion. We'll recommend a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the two appointments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Ayes have it, Ms. Lindsey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item seven, resolution. A, resolution approving the purchase of property located at four-eighty-eight Monk Street, bearing the tax map number seven-dash-twelve-dash-thirteen-dash-zero-four-three-dot-zero-zero. Presenter, Mr. Martin Livingston, Community Development Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Staff is requesting approval of a resolution to purchase four-eighty-eight Monk Street. Staff has worked, uh, worked in agreement with the property owner for the purchase of this property, and also have completed an appraisal of the property. The lot will be included in, along with the other thirty lots in that area, in the Midtown Heights area, for, we'll develop a small area development plan, a guide development in that area. And so, staff is requesting approval of a resolution to proceed with purchase of this property, and we'll answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Lord Johnson, councilwoman Lord Johnson.
Martin, I drove over there yesterday because I wanted to see exactly where this lot was, and I drove back in there. I was wondering, what in the world are we gonna be able to put on this lot? However, as a realtor, I know that all real estate has value, even if not now, because it will in the future. I was surprised to see that there's another house back out in there, and the house is very, very attractive.
Yes, there are several homeowners live in the area, there's also property in that area. We own several lots adjacent to this lot as well, so we can combine all the lots and then subdivide the lots for potential development. The small area plan will probably guide that process for us, and give us some ideas on what, what can be developed in that area.
Thank you, I just wanted to see where it was.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions? We need a motion, recommend a motion?
Not more than I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Resolution entering to the development agreement with Taffin Gibbs LLC and redevelop the former Beaumont Mill site with a multiple, multi-family apartments for rent. Resolution, and presenter, Mr. Story, city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, what's before you is another economic development item associated with, um, meeting the rapidly growing housing demand in our community. As, uh, I'm sure you're all familiar with, the, the site of the former Beaumont Mill on, uh, North Pine Street, um, has, uh, the, the, the portion of the mill that was renovated to become offices, which is the headquarters, uh, professional offices for, uh, the Spartanburg Regional Healthcare System and affiliated entities. And then, on the other end of that long, um, uh, block is a medical office, um, uh, medical center. Between the two is a large, uh, at this point vacant, uh, commercial site. This action would authorize a development agreement for a seventy million dollar investment to provide two-hundred-and-forty-seven market-rate apartments, twenty-eight workforce units. Those workforce units will be for those at eighty percent or below area median income that rents attainable to those income levels. It's an attractive, uh, project by a reputable developer that will, in, um, you know, involves a full amenity package, pool, fitness center, all of those types of things. One special aspect of the transaction is it would provide for the ability to connect the, the Dan Trail Network through that site, which is, has been a challenge. As you know, we've, we've, uh, with our partners Powell, we have done a number of trail improvements that connect Drayton and, um, uh, Converse Heights and Fernwood and all, uh, to the Beaumont neighborhood, uh, but then making that connection from Beaumont to, uh, Pine Street and downtown and beyond has been a goal, and this project would enable that. So, in addition to providing an, an efficient, attractive, uh, needed housing, uh, this, of course, would boost, um, local government revenues. It's a ramped, uh, ramped-up, uh, um, model we've, uh, followed in other transactions. The year one, additional local governmental revenue from the, from the transaction would be about just under one-hundred thousand dollars. Year five would be over half a million dollars, year ten, one-point-one million, and year fifteen, one-point-eight million. So, continue to have multiple levels of benefit, uh, based on this transaction, and so we recommend your approval. It would then, if approved, would, would then go through the development review process, building code review process, and things of that nature, but, uh, certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chris, thank you. Um, the Beaumont Neighborhood Association, the, um, has sort of faded over the years after, since COVID, and really weren't meeting. But learning about this project, I reached out to one of the residents who was actively involved and, um, asked if they could meet to just sort of have a discussion about this project, 'cause I wanted them to be aware of what was happening and what was potential to come. Um, of course, I had another meeting the night that they, um, convened, and thank you very much for going and answering questions. But can you share a little bit about, I mean, I did speak to him the next day, didn't seem to get a whole lot of negativity towards the project. I think one of the biggest concerns was, um, the traffic through the neighborhood and the concerns how folks may, you know, cut through, you know, North Liberty. I know that's been an issue in the past, um, but they were, you know, appreciative of the nod of the design, how it sort of gives a nod to the historic style of the mill next door. But can you share a little bit, I mean, there, we did do a traffic study, correct?
Yes.
And there weren't any?
Yes, with, this full traffic study, uh, has been conducted for the site. Most of the volume will, um, uh, or the vast majority won't directly impact the, the Beaumont Village. It will exit the site on the pine, um, through that signalized intersection and, um, the signalized intersection at, uh, Beaumont and Isom. That traffic study's been reviewed by our planning staff, as well as SC DOT's, uh, planning staff, as North Pine is, uh, is in their jurisdiction, as is Isom. So, um, across the whole, it, it, it appears that, um, we're well situated in terms of turn lane capacity and signal timing, uh, to accommodate the project.
I think, um, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of, of the project itself, but I would ask that we are proactive in some of the traffic calming measures through the neighborhood. Those are specific concerns that the neighborhood had. I didn't hear necessarily any opposition to the project itself, but that traffic being a huge concern. So, um, if this were to move forward, um, that is something I would like for us to put at the forefront before it starts churning.
Chris, I'd like to echo that. I think, yeah, that's always been an issue, and particularly as it relates to, you know, Isom and Pine and, and North Liberty and Beaumont. I mean, there's just a lot of activity there, and, and two-hundred-and-forty-seven new, um, you know, residents or more that, that will move into that, um, that piece of property. I think there really need to be some, some good planning. But I'm excited about the project. We've all, I think, had the chance to meet the developers. They're, they're, they're quality folks, they did quality work, um, they're, I think, consistent with the developers that we've been attracting into our community, uh, of late, and I think that is to everyone's benefit. Uh, I love the tie-in with the trail system. Um, you know, I know, in talking to the Laposse folks that developed, uh, Boxcar, you know, that was one of the key components that they were attracted, uh, to the area by, and as well as what they did at, at the, um, the Kennedy, um, so, or the Fitzgerald, sorry. Um, so, you know, I, I think that's, that's all very exciting. I, I note that you include the table here on, on what the estimated property tax revenue schedule will be, starting with year one going through year fifteen. Do you, do you know currently what the tax revenue generated by that property is?
Well, this particular parcel has no taxable asset on it, so it's just, it would be at the residual land value from when it was originally purchased. I don't know that figure, but it's a tiny fraction.
So, just to, just to put a finer point on that, um, by, by this development, not only will we get a seventy million dollar investment, uh, residents for two-hundred-and-forty-seven or more, uh, you know, Spartanburg folks, as well as the, the twenty-eight that will be workforce housing, which accomplishes all of the goals that we've established for, you know, these kinds of projects. We will begin in year one generating more tax revenue than that property is already generating, even with abatements as part of this development deal.
That's correct, that's correct.
And that will only compound in years two, three, four, leading up to year fifteen, when it's a million eight-hundred thousand.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Good, good, good. Chris, and I will echo the same sentiments with traffic. As you travel, I would imagine that south, as I'm thinking you're gonna go on up by Converse College. Again, you know, we don't, we wanna be mindful of the traffic trying to cut through to get to the apartment. So, again, as councilwoman Mayor Pro Tim Brown and, uh, Councilman Foreman mentioned, just the traffic study, making sure we are definitely being more proactive with that coming forward. But again, great, uh, opportunity for Spartanburg. Any other comments? Recommend a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve, uh, item B, resolution to enter into agreement with Taff Gibbs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any that oppose? Ayes have it. Thank you, thank you. Item eight, discussion of the clock tower options. Presenter, Mr. Story. Got a lot of people listening out there now.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Uh, bef, before I dive in, and I do have, um, more slides than some might wish I had, so I'll apologize in advance for the relative deeper dive, uh, uh, that I'll soon take. But before I dive in, I just, just wanna, uh, uh, say, as I often do when there's a, uh, a controversial sort of item on the agenda, that there are no enemies in this room, that this night, when we have more folks than we typically have, is evidence of the health of the community that comes to express concern about and interest in the activities of the community. The real enemy that I worry about is not opinions from folks, it's apathy from folks. And, uh, so, I don't see anyone that cares to come forward and share their views and get information on something like that as anything other than a, a welcome participant in the life of the community. Uh, we do live in an age, though, where, uh, there's a whole lot of pressure on people to quickly form opinions, and to, I hope, I don't expect, I don't expect, uh, that there are audience members tonight that come dead-set against any change, that'll walk out a hundred percent in support of change. I don't expect that. But I do expect, over the next few minutes, that, uh, we'll be able to add some meaningful context and some meaningful understanding, uh, to the situation that will help to reassure folks that the recommendation that the city staff is making to you is grounded and reasonable and respectful and appreciative of this community's history and, um, in, in line with efforts to make a more prosperous, uh, Spartanburg. You know, we know that change is the only constant, um, and that change is inherently unsettling, um, so I wanted to take the time to, to explore a broader view of, of the history. A, a good friend of mine who is, uh, a local historian, um, whose judgment I rely on on several matters, uh, used a phrase that I think is palpable in this moment. He said, he said, "There's a difference between memory and history." So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about his, the, the history and, and how we see what's proposed in light of the, the full picture of local history. And finally, before I dive in, I wanna thank, um, uh, the, the staff at the Spartanburg County Public Library, whose tremendous archives I've been diving into here. They have a wonderful, uh, depth of information available about each point in the history that I'll, that I'll share, and, um, I'll also emphasize that everything I'm gonna share in the next few minutes is public information and has been accessible through, uh, through the library, or through, much of it through our own website, um, over the, over the past years, um, and, uh, as this presentation will be as well. So, let's dive into the, the history of the town clock and the relevant context. Start the timeline at the first time this town had a clock. Uh, eighteen eighty-one, the clock was purchased and installed as a prominent architectural feature of a new local government building. Eighteen eighty-one is also the year that the, uh, the city charter, uh, was approved, uh, by the state government, and so some point to that day is the, is the day, uh, is the year Spartanburg was established as a, as a city or town. And at that time, uh, the, the city leadership built what was known as the Opera House, um, on Main Street. Uh, this was, it did include an event venue opera house on the second floor, but its first floor was city offices. The seat of local, local government in the community, and that building was the pride of the community. And you see, its most prominent architectural feature was the tower that, uh, contained the clock and the bell, that we'll talk about more tonight. That sat in place twenty-six years. In nineteen oh seven, the clock moved and was installed as a prominent architectural feature of a new local government building. At that time, it was this courthouse on Magnolia Street. And you see different architectural style, similar composition in that there were, uh, several floors of, of, of various spaces, and then a signature element architecturally that included the clock, uh, the town clock there. So, a lot of similar similarities between those two structures, but they served different generations. So, that, uh, clock was in the courthouse from nineteen oh seven to nineteen fifty-eight. And in nineteen fifty-eight, the clock was put in storage, uh, and a decision was made that there wouldn't be a clock tower element in the new county courthouse, what was then the new county courthouse. Obviously, it's no longer the new county courthouse because it was demolished within the last, uh, handful of years to make way for the current county courthouse. So, that, um, so at nineteen fifty-eight, they, the, the clock and the bell were moved into the basement and sat in storage for twenty years. In nineteen seventy-nine, the clock and the bell were restored, and the new, uh, what we now know as the clock tower, new tow, uh, tower was erected at the intersection of Main and Liberty. Uh, that, uh, Main and Liberty was, as was referenced by Commenter Tonight, uh, part of the Main Street Mall, Main Street Pedestrian Mall. That, uh, that intersection was known as Liberty Square. My name's not in the clock. Uh, I moved to Spartanburg as a boy in nineteen eighty-three, but I made it in time to shop on Main Street and see the clock tower at Liberty Square at that intersection, um, and remember its placement there, literally in the center of that intersection. There were some, there were some remarkably positive things about that effort. Mayor Stoddard, former, then-former Mayor Stoddard, uh, chaired bicentennial committee, and I'll certainly be talking more about that in the next few minutes, um, and they identified a number of, of things and activities, but a committee was appointed to explore, uh, restoring the, the clock and the bell. That committee went out, uh, to, um, engage a number of stakeholders and to, and to get some support, and I'll, and I'll comment on that in just a minute. But before I do, I wanted to, to remind folks here, uh, what, what the context was in that period of the- of the mid-seventies in Spartanburg. These are not my opinions, these are facts. Westgate Mall had just opened. That was all the buzz, right? Also, at the same time, there was a substantial increase in what some social scientists call white flight, but the residential relocation from the aging housing stock in the city to newer neighborhoods further out. That was a predominant condition. So the folks that were sitting in your shoes at that time had naturally a great deal of angst about the core of downtown. That was, that had to be the thing that kept them up at night staring at the ceiling, is they knew the retailers were leaving or had left, and they knew that there were socioeconomic factors that were pulling the center of activity to the commercial nodes on the east side and the west side and in other places in Spartanburg County, that they had every reason to be concerned that extraordinary steps needed to be taken to solidify a sense of connection between the next generation in downtown Spartanburg. And I believe that their engagement of some twenty thousand residents in building the clock tower was wonderful and brilliant. We have seen evidence of folks saying that that is something they have, they recall a connection to. So at the same set of years, that they went from shopping for their back-to-school clothes in downtown to shopping for their back-to-school clothes out at the mall or at Hillcrest, this was one effort that solidified that connection. Why was that important? It was important because downtowns across America work because they efficiently create opportunity for folks at all income levels, and they create successive opportunities for subsequent generations. So I suspect that the city leadership at that time was very concerned about losing their downtown, and I think that was their principal motivation. And frankly, I think it's much more significant motivation than putting names on plaques and raising the funds. If you look back at the funds that were raised, you'll find that they are a small fraction of what it cost to build the clock tower. I'm not suggesting that that's insignificant. I'm a parent, I have kids, and I know when they go into their own pockets to invest in things, the dollar amount doesn't matter. But the point is that it was done as a community engagement strategy, and it was wonderful and it worked. But the principal motivation for undertaking that communication, I mean, that community engagement strategy was deep and very necessary concern about the future of downtown and its importance to the region. So that's, that project, and I didn't include in this a photo of it at the Liberty intersection, but the actual tower itself looked very much the same, the tower, the vertical part of the tower structure, as the photo you see here, when the clock was moved to its current location. Now, why did that current, why did that move happen? That move happened because, as was commented upon tonight, the pedestrianization of those blocks of downtown at that time in that generation didn't work. Now, we could have lots of discussion about why that didn't work, but I think if you want to know the answer, you would look at aerial photographs of Westgate and Hillcrest Mall in the eighties. That, I was a frequent visitor to those places after I moved here, and they were busy and thriving. And so I think that the effort to reopen Main Street was another important step to try to get to the condition where downtown is thriving and busy and the default place for activity and interest. It's noteworthy to me, as I think about the current and future of the community, where my twelve-year-old daughter asked Dad to take her and her friends today. It's not to the malls, it's to downtown Spartanburg. That is a very, very different condition. So in nineteen eighty-nine, it moved to its current location. What made this geographic location work was that there was a significant additional road right of way there because, as many of us remember, Main Street used to sweep around the curved parking lot next to the Herald Journal, sweep right into Broad Street, and you could, you can continue on. So there was a logical, underutilized footprint there for that sixty-five-hundred-square-foot landscape island in which the clock tower currently sits. So the next point on this timeline that I think is particularly significant is that in twenty twenty, or y'all have seen that picture, I think it was already up, or maybe I clicked the wrong button, but that's how it sits today. I'm not sure the date on this picture, but roughly the same, on a sixty-five-hundred-square-foot landscape island in the center of what is Main Street. The next point on this timeline is this year. Twenty twenty-five, construction begins on a new local government building featuring a new taller clock tower architectural feature. So I'll show you some images of that here, and I think all of these are, you know, images that have been publicly available here. You see the clock tower there, it is about a hundred and thirty-something feet tall in comparison to the seventy-foot clock tower we have now. It will be the central hub of the new joint city-county governmental complex. Few additional images of that. It will be one of the tallest structures in this section of downtown. This is, this is a view from if you were standing at the corner of Church in Maine, so a full block and a half, two blocks away. That clock tower will be a new feature of our skyline and a new landmark in this community. Here's another look. This is looking from the south, as you would be approaching if you were traveling north on Church Street. You can see that there. And this is, another look is if you were on the sidewalk of Church Street, walking south on the sidewalk, how the clock tower will look there. And that's just another slightly different perspective from the main entry. And so we look back at that timeline, I think that's a more comprehensive picture than some of the framing of the history of a town clock and the connection there. I want to show these side by side because I've heard folks say that what we are proposing disregards our history. I think all of that is dependent on how one looks at the history. What I see is three local government, three, the three buildings that were, for their generation, the principal seat of local government in Spartanburg, with three clock tower elements as their principal architectural feature. And then I see a standalone, freestanding clock tower, which is what occupies our memories because it's what we're exposed to, but ignores the first two images, which are our history. And the objective of the committee at that time, in the seventies, at the bicentennial effort, was to create, they were not in a position to undertake a new local government building and to hearken back to the history of those prior seats of local government. So they did what they could and what was appropriate for them at that moment, just as their parents and grandparents had done and their parents and grandparents had done. So what we have proposed, in addition to erecting a much taller clock tower, is to take the truly unique historic elements that are within the building and celebrate them. Make it so your kids and mine and your grandkids and others can get close to them, to understand how those historic clockworks worked, to see that bell they've only seen from hundreds of feet away, or at best seventy feet away, and get close to those things. What you see here on this slide are two images from other communities that have done just that with other historic clockworks. You see the labor-intensive mechanics that went into building those? Those are up on the inside of the clock tower right now. Only a handful of us have seen it. Christopher George is in the back, he climbed that ladder to see it, but I'm, and maybe there are others in the room, but not many that have seen it. I'd like to make them visible. I think it would be in our interest to do so. This is a slightly more famous bell than the bell that's in ours, but it shows, and that bell, of course, one point in its history was, you know, up above and in the air. This shows that if you bring it down, polished it up, and put it at ground level, it creates an interesting place to interact with and an interesting illustration that people can connect to of their history. I think that's an idea worthy of exploration. So just to recap a little bit of the history, for one hundred and twenty-four years, a town clock has been a feature of downtown. For over sixty percent of that time, that has been in the form of an architectural feature of a prominent local government building. And recent city and county actions have ensured that that will be the case for the coming So again, I think, I think seeing it in its whole context, it's possible to see how this is an entirely appropriate transition to recapture the spirit that folks felt was missing in nineteen seventies when they came together to have these conversations about the clock tower. So I will, I will, I'll now pivot to the question that's been raised about the South Carolina Heritage Act. South Carolina Heritage Act is a piece of legislation that was hashed out in Columbia when the Confederate flag was being brought down. Because at that time, there were some folks that said, "We'll remove the Confederate flag, but we want to make sure we don't remove other things associated with," at that time their principal motivation was the Confederate War, I mean, the Civil War. And so this was the compromise that was hashed out. Now, I could talk for just as long as I've been talking about this, about why it may be wrong for these type of local decisions to be made in Columbia and not locally, but the reality is, the law is clear, and we would, we intend to follow the law. Let's read what the law says. The law says, "Is no Revolutionary War, War of eighteen twelve," well, y'all can read all of that, I won't read it to you, "Native American or African-American history monuments or memorials erected on public property of the state or any of its political subdivisions may be relocated, removed, disturbed, or altered." So in order to argue that the South Carolina Heritage Act applies to the clock tower, one would have to conclude that the clock tower is a Revolutionary War monument, has no known connection to any other wars. The Revolutionary War connection, to the extent that there would be one, is in the fact that the bicentennial, which was, again, the celebration of the Declaration of Independence, that the bicentennial committee was an advocate for and conceived of bringing, erecting the clock tower. That's the connection that advocates for the application of this act to this situation are making. So we ought to examine that, right? Well, the first piece of evidence I would look to is, what did they actually say when they built the clock tower? These are the same plaques that are there today. You can read them for yourself. What you won't find, I mean, you can't read them off of this. You can go read them after the meeting. I'm sorry. I know these are bad pictures. I was trying to just establish that they are, in fact, the same ones that were put in place on the ground in nineteen seventy-nine and that remain on the ground at the foot of the clock tower today. Let's talk first about what you won't find in this seven hundred and forty-word essay. You won't find the word "revolution," you won't find the word "war," you won't find the word "soldier," you won't find any of those things. You will find a reference to, that I will read, one sentence in the seven hundred and forty-word discussion. "In the nineteen seventies, efforts were begun by the Spartanburg Bicentennial Committee to restore this symbol of the city in an appropriate central location." That's the extent of any reference to any war of, you know, or the revolution itself. The opening line of these plaques is, when, again, the folks who acted in the seventies told us what their intent was, the opening line is, "Symbolic of the heartbeat of the city and its constant change." That's what they told us. Now, let's talk about other things that the bicentennial committee did. Bicentennial committee was a very successful effort. Former Mayor Stoddard led a remarkable, there were, there were a number of subcommittees that did a number of different endeavors. Various media reports and Herald Journal coverage and other things list some twenty-plus projects, activities, and initiatives. One news article says, let's see, see, what they were working under was a desire to participate in a national effort that required present projects to be undertaken in order to qualify for the bicentennial designation and funding that they were seeking. And so there were, let's find the exact wording, there was one list wherein the project prioritization committee identified, I believe it was sixteen different projects and priorities, and ranked number fourteen on that list. Below thirteen others was the clock tower. This is a, this document here is a report- This is a, this document here is a report of the bicentennial committee. It says, "Some thirty-odd projects were endorsed and most of them have been completed." Some of the, some of the projects include restoration of the Say House, restoration of Magnolia Street Cemetery. There's another cemetery, cemetery referenced here. Walnut Grove House of Flowers, Little Theater Production, a number of different things, some with, all with a tie to community, all with a tie to positive activities, but what the law requires is a tie to the Revolutionary War. That's not in any way established in any of the many pages of documents I have read associated with the bicentennial committee. So for those reasons and, and others, we believe that in order to conclude this, this applies, you'd have to look at all twenty-plus projects that were implemented, that were associated with the bicentennial and conclude that they all apply as, as decisions that have to be made by Columbia. We just don't think that meets the test of reasonableness. So we are not operating under the expectation that any change City Council might consider related to the clock tower is subject to review in accordance with the South Carolina Heritage Act. So I'll pivot now to New Main Street. Toward the question of, "Why now?" would be one way to think about this. Well, remember those folks in the seventies who were really scared about downtown? Really scared about its role in the region and being lost and left behind? Well, now, we have not one, but the two largest investments in the city's history, inflation-adjusted, by a long ways, happening currently in our time. This is the kind of stuff those folks in the seventies desperately sought to, to see happen, to solidify their downtown as a center of gravity that might be appealing to their children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren. And they are happening now, and they force us all to consider adapting to some change. This illustration, I know is hard to see from there, but I'll tell you what's, what it shows. The, the lower-left corner of the, of the image is, you can just see the, the outfield wall of the new baseball stadium. The upper right-hand corner of the image is the heart of Morgan Square, where you see number four on the left-hand edge of the image. That's a new office building that'll be on Main Street immediately west of the AC Hotel, that will begin construction this, this year, within the next couple of months. Where you see number three, that's the AC Hotel. Where you see number two, that's a new office building. So we're dealing with well over a thousand white-collar jobs concentrating on our Main Street. White-collar jobs, the kind of jobs we'd all hope our kids or grandkids could benefit from, concentrating on Main Street. Where you see number one is, 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 is a hotel with restaurant and retail spaces. So collectively, again, we're looking at the large single, largest single investment in the city here, history. We're, if you incorporate what's going to happen, just to, just where the, where the actual legend is on this, on this particular illustration is the former City Hall block. When that block renovation starts in a couple of months, it'll be the second-largest capital investment in the city's history, adjusted for inflation. So all of these are happening concurrently and in the, and in a small, small area here. Lots of jobs, lots of work, lots of visitors to this community. We expect to have one thousand construction workers in this image illustrated right here, in this footprint, over the next two years. So this is not, I, this is when I'll be, be more pointed about one of the criticisms I've, I've heard. One of the criticisms I've heard is, "We're just doing the bidding of a developer here." This is, this is not the developer's preference. This is our community's aspiration for creating the downtown that can be an engine for a generation. Now, why does this affect the clock tower? You can see I've added to this illustration a dashed blue line. We believe it's important, not just today, not just tomorrow, but forever, for the, the Herald Journal block to be built to that historic-form street edge. The buildings on the, on the, to the right-hand end of, of that dashed blue line have existed for generations, and they have aligned with the basic, the, the aspect that doesn't deviate, I mean, I'm sorry, the aspect that deviates from the historic form of our downtown is the swing that, that, sort of the, the turn in, in Main Street. That's the piece that you won't find on maps from a hundred years ago. And so we're trying to respect the original form. We're also trying to build what is going to be one of the South's best main streets on the other side of all this work. This is one of several images of the Herald Journal block development that I'll share. And again, all of this has been readily available on the city's website for months now. You see, in the background, in the upper-left, you see the baseball stadium. And in the upper-right, you see the AC Hotel and the new office building adjacent to it. And as you come forward towards this, towards the square, you pass an office building, a big event venue adjacent to and connected with the hotel, several restaurant retail spaces in the hotel there. The hotel contains, that includes a, you see on the roof there, a rooftop event space, restaurant, and a rooftop pool and things of, of that nature. This is an award-winning design, a top-tier quality design, and one that I think the community can be proud of for a long, long time. Again, collectively, we're talking about over three hundred million dollars of private resources being invested here. You see, this is just a slightly different angle of, of the same block, and this is more of a street view angle. You can see how the facades align, and that is made possible by taking out the, the wiggle in the road. And again, this creates the, the, the street image and the street life that we've been aspiring to since back in the seventies. So all of that is to say that we are recommending that we return the clock tower to its historic position overlooking the seat of local government, that we restore the bell and the clockworks to publicly accessible elements in the new building, and that we achieve the optimal Main Street. We know that that means that folks whose names are in the clock tower, many, many, many of my friends and our friends and everyone are in that boat. We know that that means that that destination would be somewhat different, but it does not go away. It's returned to, to its historic location. It's still a place that kids and grandkids can be taken to see those names on those plaques. It's in a, it's in a facility that is theirs, that they can be proud of forever. And there's a very solid reason, consistent with this community's history, for making that move. So we believe it's responsible and prudent to go ahead and, and make that. And we believe that instead of focusing on what is the uncomfortable change, I would ask those of you whose name's in that clock to lean in to the spirit that Mayor Stoddard and others were attempting to cultivate of stewardship for your Main Street and your downtown. Lean into that and think about what is best in, in the long run for your community. And I know I've said too much, maybe. I know that I've talked too long. But to be candid, we have looked. It is possible to move it. But candidly, the, the, the principal reason that I'm not recommending moving it is because it, because two clock towers within a block or two of each other just take, just take the shine off both.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
And, and the, we're trying to, you know, restore and honor the, the history of, of the original impetus for that, and we think it's a responsible move to make. This is a staff recommendation to the council. It is, of course, the council's prerogative what happens. The clock can be moved, and the town, I mean, the, the, the tower can be moved. And there are locations within the downtown where that could be achieved. And so those are, those are options available to us. The resources for making that move happen would be, I would recommend, be in the restructuring of the, the, the cost. We can make some design changes to the, to the plans for Morgan Square to reduce the net, net cost of that function to be able to absorb the cost of, of moving it, if that's the, the will of the council. And so why don't I?
Thank you.
Question, see what questions?
Good, good, good. And I'm, I'm sure each council person have a few questions in mind. But I do want to say thank you for your presentation and thank you for all the ones that have stayed to, to, to hear it out as well. A lot of times, we get public comments. They come in and make a few and they leave. But I do appreciate all of you staying just to hear what had to be said. Ms. Branch, thank you. And to the Stoddard family, we want to thank them. I want to thank them personally. But, and, and to you all in the audience, my, my name is inside the clock tower. So I am one of those kids that, that, you know, use some of his allowance to give towards this clock tower. And I do understand the history, not so much as a memory, Chris, as you stated, but the history. That, that history lesson you gave was pretty good, pretty, pretty deep. I, I, I sit here and I reminisce on quite a few things you, you have mentioned, going downtown to Community CASH to actually get my school clothes. But also, I do remember transitioning to the mall. So it can go on and on and as we state those facts. But I'll, I'll quit rambling. Counsel, questions? Statement, Ms. Sally.
Chris, I want to say thank you for your presentation. It was very, very well done and well said and well put. I am, and I'm maybe speaking out of term, but I am in favor of moving or taking the clock down and putting it into a beautiful building that's going to be constructed and being seen from both sides of the main streets. And as far as our government building, it, it represents very well. My biggest concern is to making sure that the bell and the other integral parts of the clock on the inside is, and the names, of course, be displayed in a public place where it can be recognized and told the story behind each element. Thank you.
Ms. Proten?
Chris, assuming if this were to be the clock tower, and you mentioned, you know, folks can bring their kids and their grandkids, is, is the county, city administrative building going to be open twenty-four hours a day?
No, no, would not be open.
So how are people supposed to, I mean, one of the, the features of the current location is, you know, kids are out during the summertime, they've got, you know, their families downtown, they're walking, and they can literally give them comments about the historical nature of the clock tower, show their grandkids the bricks, et cetera. So how are folks, I mean, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, you know, the city-county building now becoming sort of a tourist destination, if you will, during, during regular, you know, I mean, it's like, well, kids are in school every day. So, and I assume this building will not be accessible on the weekends. So how are folks supposed to tell the story of their grandparents and parents and all the things when this isn't going to even be accessible? And just a personal taste opinion, I hate the design of the clock tower. I, I just, I'm not, I just don't like the design. But I also didn't like the Morgan Square design. So it's just a matter of personal taste. I like the classical feel of what it currently is, I personally. And, and, you know, you talked about, you know, there might be potential to move it to another place in downtown. I mean, we just delayed Morgan Square because we don't have the money to move forward, but now we're talking, I mean, how are we going to incorporate looking at funding for that when we don't really have a budget right now for Morgan Square? Because that's kind of been put on the backburner. So I think that's a, that's a number of different questions, I think. But I, I would like to see it maintained in some capacity. I mean, it means something to folks. I, I don't, you know, I'm not a structural engineer or anything like that. And so there, there begs those questions in terms of being able to properly take it down and relocate it. I don't know anything about that. I mean, this is just a wish list. I don't know if it's attainable. But I'm personally not even a fan of the current clock tower design in the new building. I'm a fan of the new building itself, and I'm excited for it to come. But I, I don't know. I just, it's not very appealing to me. But I also didn't like Morgan Square.
I'll, I'll attempt to address a couple of those questions. One is, we had thought that the display elements would be better to be indoors, protected from the weather, things of that nature. But there's nothing that says it has to be that way. Now, I think the, irrespective of opinions on the, the architectural appeal of the new clock tower, I certainly understand where you're coming from there. It will be a skyline feature and visible from a much greater distance and tastefully lit at night and things of that nature, in a way that it will be very visible, very prominent, twenty-four-seven. But the, but the displays that we had envisioned of the clockworks and the bell itself, we'd envisioned being inside. But there's nothing that says it has to be that way. We could figure out some way to, to make We could figure out some way to make the plaques and the restored internal elements visible outdoors. I'm sure there are folks more creative than I who have to do that.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, I really appreciate the history that you shared with us and especially the context, the historical context that that city council was responding to. And I believe it's the job of each version of a city council to respond and shape the present, respect the past, but also vision for the future. And to your point, our downtown is still not as robust and economically viable as we all would want it to be. We've seen such incredible progress over the last several years, but we still have empty storefronts. We still have empty parking spaces, despite how much people complain about there not being enough parking. So we still have room to grow in that area. And for me, it's, well, why? Why do we need 1,000 more jobs? Why do we need another hotel? It's not just to pack bodies into downtown, it's so that the kids who live across the street in Highland have a city who can afford more police officers, who we can hire more firefighters. We can perform the services of our city in a more healthy economic and viable way. And as my colleague, Mr. Fulmer, is always so good at doing, in commenting on how much we have to gain economically with the projects that you just showed us on the map, to have that much more in hospitality tax and accommodations tax, and people who are going to lunch downtown and spending money downtown, whether they live downtown or not, all of that is contributing to our budget as a city. I don't want to be Greenville either, but I want our conversations around budget season to be able to be, yes, we can afford more code enforcement, yes, we can afford more public workspeople. And the only way that we get there is when we have more people contributing to our tax base. So to me, that's part of looking forward to the future. And as I've been, you know, we've all been thinking about this, and there was a line on the, the last line on the plaque that really sealed the deal for me. It says, "Hearing the bell and knowing the hour," ironically because the bell doesn't ring anymore and there's no hands on the clock anyway, but no one's come out to protest that and let's have a clock that actually works. But, "Hearing the bell and knowing the hour will remind citizens of all ages of their heritage as Spartans and of their responsibility for the future and for the character of citizens yet to come." We can honor the children who gave their allowance. That is not theft, that is not treason of our city. It is instead holding our responsibility for the future and for the children and the citizens who are yet to come, who are yet to be born, who are yet to move to our city. That is the spirit that I believe us as a council need to be holding. I appreciate that folks have a difficult time, as so much is changing in the world and things that we have those memories. That was an excellent point, that memories are not necessarily history. But I believe that what staff is proposing does honor the original goal of the bicentennial committee, which let's not forget what the Revolutionary War was about, which was, let's do something new. Let's create a new path and a new future for us as a new nation and not hold on to the past because we've known that it's working. So that's my comment. I have a question, it's more of a procedural question. All of the projects that you've shared were a part of Project Core, which we voted on two-plus years ago. Do we need to vote to approve a move or relocation, or would we need to vote to stop it? What is the actual action needed from council moving forward?
Well, I think it's in the community interest for there to be a clear action. Our development agreement on Project Core that was passed a couple of years ago, as you mentioned, contemplates the, it obligates that we would modify that intersection. It does not say anything about the clock tower explicitly, but we think it's the right thing to do. So it is a recommendation to you all that we, I think Bob and I would both share the opinion that a clear vote to authorize the change, whichever, whatever form of change that is, is appropriate.
And are you bringing that recommendation tonight, or that's not an agenda item?
No, it is an agenda item.
It is an agenda item.
And so it's within your prerogative to give us that direction and vote tonight or at a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
We can definitely give a motion to vote, or we can take it for information only. But I figure we have a few more comments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. You know, like a lot of things we deal with as a council, we find ourselves at the intersection of the past, the present, and the future. And perhaps, in this example, there's no more visual reminder of that than this particular issue. I jotted down some notes as you talked. I haven't, by the way, been, I hadn't sat through a lecture that long since my days at Oregon College. And I appreciate that. But I do appreciate the historical perspective, and it does remind me of things. My memory's better than the mayor's, right? I remember a lot of these things, you know, because it is deeply personal. I mean, this is our home. This is Spartanburg. We love Spartanburg. I've loved it my entire life. And, you know, it's where my wife and I chose to raise our family. And, you know, like the mayor, like Roy, like Baker, like a lot of people in this room, our names are on that clock plaque. And we take great pride in that. We take our children to see it, you know. And I think that, you know, that should not, I mean, that is significant, right? It is important because of the deeply personal nature of it. But I also think about, Megan referenced one section of the plaque at the very end, but really, and I've used this a lot, but I think in the paragraph above that, the plaque says, "This plaque was made possible by the donations of Spartanburg schoolchildren who undertook to buy a piece of the clock for their community. Such was their peculiarly appropriate, since such was peculiarly appropriate, since the quality of life of the community remains as always an obligation of the citizens of the future." And so the future was every bit as much a part of that effort as was the past. And I think that was the beauty of what Mayor Stoddard and his committee did, was we recognized the past, but we celebrated the future. And we recognized the future was going to be one that involved change. And I think we've seen that with the number of times that the clock has moved. I mean, poor General Morgan, I mean, he's, you know, he's got a lifetime membership to Smith &amp; Mayflower. But I think that as we look at our downtown, you know, it evolves. They always evolve. And, you know, Roy talks about not wanting to be Greenville. I love Greenville, but I don't want to become Greenville. I want to become the best Spartanburg we can. And to me, the opportunity to infuse a project like Project Core that has already yielded so many positive benefits, and we've only seen one element of it. We haven't seen 1,000 workers downtown yet. We haven't seen 1,000, 1,500 or more people working downtown and what that means. We haven't seen the new hotel built. So I think we've got to come to grips with the fact that things change. And so I am very respectful and understand the feelings of those who don't want to see it moved. And I have, because of all the reasons that I've mentioned, I've reconciled in my mind that there's going to be some level of change. Now, to me, the question remains, what does that change look like? You know, I think your presentation was very compelling, you know, about an exhibit. But I think one of the things about the clock tower as it currently exists is that it is accessible and engaging, opportunity to engage 24/7. And I think that means weekends, that means nights, that means when folks are downtown eating, you know, after work. I mean, all of those things are important to me personally, you know, and so I think we need to consider that. But I do think, and I think, I want to make sure I understand more clearly, because I think we've had some illustrations of what it could look like. But really, the issue is the needed bump out for the buildable space of the hotel. Because what you see in the curve now is not the curve that's currently there. The block will be squared off so that you can add hundreds of buildable square feet to that lot, which then allows much more density in that lot, but also makes it more economically viable. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, absolutely. We only get one shot for that block for the next 50, 60 years. And it's really important that it be the full rectangle for several reasons that are recognized around the world as city building priorities. That is coherent lines, corners, retail and restaurant frontages that work, that are visible from the street and that type of thing. So that's, that building frontage line is, may seem inconsequential to some, but we think from an architectural and engineering perspective and city building perspective, it's very, very important.
Because what I'm concerned about is if you leave the tower where it currently is and you build that scale of building, it's going to look jammed in and it's going to look crowded. And so, you know, I think about, you know, we talked about when it was moved in 1989. I mean, I know that you're correct, in my opinion, that, you know, the mall concept was a defensive posture. We're playing offense with a speedy running back. And so, you know, as we look at this, you know, I mean, and also, when it was moved in 89, I believe it coincided with the development of the block where the now Denny's Tower sits. And so that was changed, that was progress, and that was moving the ball forward. And so, you know, I think we have to, we have to accept that. What I would prefer would be that we find, you know, some suitable location in our downtown where we can relocate that clock and make sure that it's a site of prominence where people can access it as they've been accessing it. Because I think in many ways, that's as much a part of the history of the clock as the clock itself, is how it's evolved and how it's moved. And I think you can celebrate all of the things that you're talking about as it relates to the clock and its original origins in the seat of government. But I think we've got to find a way to, you know, keep the clock as an integral part of our downtown. But I think we also have to come to grips with the fact that it may be time to move it because of the opportunity that we have in front of ourselves. And I think we would be doing a disservice to our children if we didn't take advantage of that opportunity.
The, I wanted to, I wanted to just add one point of clarification on that your comments reminded me of, and that is to consider if we attempted to square off the block as envisioned, but leave the tower where it is, what would be the impact? Well, it's important to understand that the hotel and that full block redevelopment is taller than the clock tower. And so now, when the clock tower is surrounded by 6,500 square foot area of green space and lawn, it has a sense of proportion to it. If it's a short distance away from a taller building, it will, it will be significantly, it will have a very different feeling, character, and a very different sightline.
And I'll note, Chris, I think with one of the statements that we had received, I think there was a discussion or an option or suggestion of a few of, you know, basically shaving down that island. But, you know, to your point about being, having the opportunity and having something accessible, you know, with traffic running through, that is, that's one of the reasons why I would not be in favor of something like that. But still, folks having the ability to access that, wherever that clock may be, that'd probably be the one that I'd go to because I just like it more, it's more aesthetically pleasing, in my opinion.
And to your point, though, Chris, I hadn't thought about this, but even if it was left as is, it's going to be overshadowed by buildings. And so the visuals that we've come to know and love around, you know, looking westward with the sunset, those visuals won't exist anymore because it'll be blocked by buildings. You know, so I think, I think that's an even, you know, even more of a factor to consider as we think about, you know, let's embrace this opportunity and let's find a great new place for it and let that represent the next wave of positive momentum in our city.
Good. As we continue this conversation and as, you know, the audience can hear as well, just the complexity of the decision, and again, thank you, Chris, for bringing it to us, the history piece, as well as the audience. But as I look and hear the council speaking, I do think we would, at this time, recommend a motion, if we can, are we?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would ask that, you know, we get more clarity on what, it's a two-part process, right?
The piece with the clock and the display, I definitely agree 100 that it needs to be displayed 24/7. And I hear Mayor Protem, and your second piece was Jamie?
Well, no, I guess, I guess my question is, you know, there's the consideration of the fact that it needs to be moved.
Right.
But the second part of that, which I think is an important piece, is where or how we're going to move it. Are we going to move it as recommended by staff? Or are we going to recommend, move it as suggested by some of us up here as it relates to, you know, finding a new home for it? And I think we need some clarity on that before we can make a full-throated exercise of our vote. But that's my personal thing.
Chris, as far as timeline, I know folks are wanting to break ground and move forward on projects. So the most urgent piece, I believe, would be deciding what to do with the current structure. What's your recommendation, I mean, as far as the timeline of those projects, tonight, in two weeks?
Well, I think what we've, what we're, what we've heard advanced is really three different outcomes, I would say. One is the recommendation I've made to you all involving the, you know, converting the inner parts into displays, and each of these three probably has some variables within it. But the recommendation I have made to you all is one option. The second option would be to analyze other locations and get you a definitive recommendation on another location that the tower could be moved to. We believe that given its age, we'd be dealing with some combination of moving and reconstructing to actually, the bulk of it can be moved, we believe, but there's going to be need to be some reconstruction involved.
Well, it doesn't work, so that's part of it.
What's that?
It doesn't work.
Well, that's true. I mean, there's some of that. And then the third would be if council simply directed that it must stay where it is, and we'd have to deal with the specific ramifications of that on the other projects and other things. So those are the three pathways. If any of them were eliminated tonight, that'd make the world simpler, but they don't have to be. Well, we do have, we do have to move within the next couple of meetings in some direction or another to fulfill our contractual obligations about redoing that intersection, you know, in a timely manner. But we'll, if it was council's will to take one of those three options off the table or to select one of them tonight, I could round out the details in the next couple of weeks, or we could revisit the matter in a couple of weeks.
I saw this revisit.
I saw this revisit. Um, would it, I mean...
One of the three off?
Would it make sense to vote on one element of that tonight and then revisit for future meetings?
I think if that's, if council would like to, certainly, we can, we can deal with that.
Can we take one of the three off the table?
My, my personal opinion is that, that it's hard to take the option off the table definitively if we don't have a clear sense of what the next step is.
Going with the other two.
But I, but I, but I also understand the, the, the timing and the need to move forward. So, I mean, I, I don't know that it's appropriate to take a vote, but, but I've expressed my sentiment very clearly. I mean, I, I, I think that, that, and, and maybe my colleagues agree or don't agree, but, but I've come to grips with the need to move it. And, and so now the, the question is what comes next? I don't know how you layer that into a vote that gives you any level of, of path forward or, or direction or surety, but, but I don't think I would be comfortable taking a vote to say we're simply going to move it with no, with no path to step two.
I, I agree with that. You know, if we were to, to vote to, to move it, I, I'm on the same page as you are. To move it, my worry would be that it would be moved with no option of how we do that. Is it relocate it to another, uh, location? Or is it, you know, break it down and salvage, you know, the pieces that you recommended? My first preference is to find another location for it.
I'm not getting the sense from anyone up here that we want to leave it as is. So we could make a motion to vote to move it and recommend staff come back at the next meeting with recommendations on what that relocation, whether that's a move or in the current place. That would essentially be two votes? I will be missing the next council meeting.
You too.
You too? Okay, so we probably don't want to take a vote. I'll be in New Orleans for a work conference, unfortunately.
Jamie's not in favor of moving without a location. I don't want to speak for you. I just want to understand for myself. I don't want to speak for you.
I mean, my vote would, i- if, if the vote was to vote simply to move it now, I would vote no.
Okay.
So if staff were to come back in two weeks with recommendations on location of a relocation and then in two more weeks take a vote, is that timeline enough for you? I don't think we would want to take a vote on something with three council members, four, four.
Yeah, four.
Depends on who they are.
Depends on who they are. I don't want to not be...
You had to fly in and fly back out. Chris, I, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that. We're just going to take this for information, um, tonight, and we will follow up and give you more directions in the coming days.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, we have staff updates.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of items to highlight that may be of, um, community City staff has allocated eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars from the South Carolina State Housing Finance and Development Authority to assist homeowners with disaster recovery. Most of that's been in the form of, uh, roof repairs and, uh, tree removal and things like that for Hurricane Helene damaged homes. Uh, we've assisted to date thirty-two households, um, and with costs, uh, ranging from as little as eight hundred dollars of work to, to more, much more significant. I wanted to highlight that program tonight because, uh, those funds are not exhausted. Um, and so if there are residents of, of the community who, uh, who have, uh, damage to their properties associated with that, uh, with Hurricane Helene that still haven't been able to be repaired and worked through with FEMA or insurance issues, that there is an additional resource, um, and they should contact our neighborhood services team, um, to, to learn more about that.
Chris, I'm sorry, I might have missed the first part. Do they have to be, be a certain age or within a certain percentage of area median income?
There are program requirements, but we encourage folks to contact us so we, you know, figure out a way to, see if we can figure out a way for them to...
Do the funds also include, does it have to be damage to their structure or can it also include tree removals?
It can in, include damaged tree, uh, removals. It doesn't have to be on the house. That's been the most common type of situation, but it doesn't have to be.
Okay.
Um, but you, Martin, it is...
Also, excuse me, Chris, also, they don't have to be homeowners per se, but renters?
That's, that's correct. And if there are any, uh, you know, the, the advice we're giving is, is to, is folks who have unaddressed needs, regardless of their circumstance, reach out to neighborhood services and they'll see if they can find a way to connect. Um, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm not clear about the, the rental piece.
Well, it depends on the nature of the, the owner's circumstance, but we would be grateful if the renter would let us know.
Still go through the actual owner.
Yeah, Chris, but the tree must, oh, I'm sorry.
But it would go through the owner of the home of which...
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. Sometimes there's distant landlords and imperfect information flows, so we just...
They're distant rather than just absent.
Okay, but the tree must be damaged before you can...
Yeah, or, or pose a threat of, in some kind, so...
Okay, but no removal of trees that are healthy?
That, that's correct, as long as there's not threatening any...
I mean, it could be too close to the house, I mean.
Good.
Mr. Mayor, the other, the other update I want to make is we continue to work with various community partners on, uh, downtown operations, um, in advance of some of these, these changes and make some improvements with our business engagement and communication there. So that, that works advancing well, um, and, uh, if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I'd be happy to sit down.
All right. Thank you, Chris. We appreciate that. Item ten, we have city council update. Councilwoman Smith?
Not much at all from me. Um, thank you all for being here. Thank you to the comments about the hate crimes ordinance. Um, the city of Ermo is another most recent one, just in the last couple of weeks, and I continue to work with my colleagues in discussing that. And Daniel Morgan has not been moved as many times as you think, since we're talking history tonight. Thank you.
History. Councilwoman Loda-Johns.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Right before I came here tonight, well, I got word that the groundbreaking is going to be for a new employee childcare center at Mary H. Wright, and that is going to take place on September the fourth. And I am grateful to, um, Russell Booker and Sam and his crew, which includes you. So I am grateful to you all for that, and that would take place on, um, the fourth of September. And I want to congratulate Mrs. Reader. Willa Reader has been in the school system for fifty-one years, and she is just doing wonderful. I am so grateful to her because a lot of teachers would think that if they're once they're there, you know, for twenty or thirty years, where they are going to retire and move on. And just to think that she has devoted fifty-one years of her life to teaching these young people, and she is still at it. And I am so grateful to her because she's also at the Y every morning that I go there, so she's very active on that, too. And, um, on the twenty-second of this month, last week, I attended a re-entry coalition meeting for people who have been into prison and they are coming out and they are looking for a new way of getting back into society. And a lot of the people that, who made one simple mistake and they have this record and now they are trying to get back in society and they do not have the proper IDs and things like that, you know, got to get them back in. And, um, I know that a lot of these people are not looking for a handout, but they are looking for a handout. But we sometimes, you know, when we know somebody have been in jail, we frown upon them. But we need to be very, very careful about that because it could be a family member of yours one day. So, um, give them a hand up when you can and not a handout, and don't look down on them, you know, if you know that they are trying. And I think that's it, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Councilwoman, uh, Sal.
I too would like to thank each and every one of you who made comments tonight, including from the Siren to the Clock Tower. I know each and every one of the items that was spoken on is important, and as we go forward, let's pray that we can all come together in unison to find an answer. Um, I want to say I attended the, uh, I guess you could say the, the first class, the second, well, not the first class, but I went to the Citizen Academy, uh, class, leadership class last, last week, and I'm proud of the citizens who's taking, uh, the opportunity to learn about Spartanburg. Um, I'm hoping that once they go through the program, that they will become very active in, uh, being, being a citizen of, of Spartanburg and doing their part as a volunteer. Also, I had the opportunity to share in the launching of a aiming goal campaign for the Bethlehem Center. It was a, a very exciting event, and I'm hoping that, that people can partner, that corporations and other entities can partner with them to make this a successful campaign and an actual, uh, reality for the Bethlehem Center to renew itself for the citizens of Highland. And that's it.
Councilwoman Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to, uh, send condolences to the, to the family of Captain Steve Henderson, who, who passed away since our last meeting, and to the Spartanburg County Sheriff's Office, um, obviously thinking about all of them. And then, um, as far as tonight, thank you, everybody, for being here. Uh, it's always good to see a, a packed house of interested citizens and, and, you know, I, I think we all share a, a common, um, belief that, that, you know, we're of different perspectives on a lot of issues, but we all have the same, uh, the same shared goal of doing what's best for Spartanburg. And I know that a lot of people in this audience have that same shared goal despite differences in how we get there. And, and I think it's, uh, it's a great example of a positive civil discourse, when we can come together and, and discuss ideas, uh, debate positions, but, but do so without, you know, impugning somebody else's motives or maligning their intent. And, and I think we should always remember that, even more so in today's environment and particularly as we think about issues that are of, uh, great importance to the citizens of our, our, our community, both today and tomorrow. And, and lastly, um, before the meeting started, uh, Megan asked me about, uh, taking my second child off to college. He's a freshman at South Carolina and he's, uh, so far enjoying it. I think he's attended all of his classes. But, but we, uh, we also this weekend moved our second child back to, to college. He's a senior, rising senior at Wofford. And I think we should not lose sight of the fact that, uh, you know, I spent a lot of time over there and, and, you know, downtown this weekend, seeing, you know, friends whose children go to Wofford and, and parents of other students that are now friends with my son. And, um, you know, the, the common thread just, you know, resonates very loudly. Man, y'all are doing something great in Spartanburg. What are y'all doing in Spartanburg? We love coming to Spartanburg. We love coming back to see our, our sons and daughters at Wofford or any other college. This is an incredible place. You should take great pride in, in what you're accomplishing here. Uh, and so I think we ought to always remember that, even as we're, you're, we're navigating pain points, we should all take great pride in the fact that, that we're doing some great things in Spartanburg.
Awesome, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Mr. Mayor, um, just want to echo those same sentiments. Yesterday, my phone was blowing up with moving pictures from, from my gal pals, one of my dear friends from college, whose daughter is a freshman at Wofford this year, and it's just kind of mind-blowing to think that, um, A, I am this old now where I have friends who's, you know, firstborns are starting and, you know, freshmen in, in, um, college. Uh, but I do want to thank everyone for being here and sharing your thoughts and on, um, the clock tower and engaging and keeping it peaceful. Um, I think we all want what's best and everyone has different opinions on how we might get there, and I'm hopeful that we can find a compromise that everyone is happy with. To echo your sentiments, uh, I spoke to a friend of mine who, um, Megan, who, um, down in Orangeburg, they recently passed their, um, hate ordinance as well, and, um, he sent me a copy, um, over the weekend. So I think with conversations with Siren and some of the past, um, ordinances that have been passed, um, in some of the other communities, we can come up with our own language and, and move forward and, and, um, agree to what we've said that we would do. So I want to continue those conversations, uh, look forward to seeing all the college students here and hanging out, and it was kind of a, you know, it's weird when they're not here during the summertime because you do kind of see a lull in downtown, but now things are starting to ramp back up, so, um, you know, which is actually super helpful to our downtown businesses. So continue to support local when you can, and I also want to thank the police department. Um, we had a very engaging, um, community meeting in the North Side, um, last week with, um, concerns that the neighborhood had, and we had a lot of folks show up and ask questions and share their concerns, and we'll continue to, um, have conversations and come up with solutions that, um, make our neighborhoods safer. So thank you guys for doing that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Loda-John, forgot one thing?
I forgot one thing. Listen, on last Thursday, I know that the city was doing something in the neighborhood that I represent. I got calls from several of my constituents and they were asking me the reason why I was not there. I was not informed of it. In fact, I called a few people, Brenda and representative back there, you know, Dr. Price, Goshen, Miss... Anyway, you know, I called them to see, you know, whether they knew anything about it, but nobody knew anything about it. And I kind of got the route of something that I knew nothing about. So I am encouraging the city, if there's something taking place in a neighborhood that I represent, please let me know because I'm the one that catch it if I do not show up.
You're fine. You do a lot for your...
Yes, so please let me know, okay.
For, for, for your district, and, and I actually called you, but...
I know, you're the one that called me and asked me the reason I wasn't there.
To that, to, to you all, I want to say thank you again for coming, um, to the, uh, meeting tonight, uh, and, and showing your interest in, in whatever may be on the agenda that you're so passionate about. College students moving in, Shay and I actually took a walk, uh, Saturday just around town and actually walked through the, uh, Wofford's campus, but, uh, back of the college, just looking at some potential routes, and we noticed all the college students coming back into town. And later that evening, as we were driving home, again, more activity just coming through. I also am, am so, so, uh, happy about the, uh, baseball team being here and what they continue to do for this community. On this past Sunday, yesterday, they actually did a, uh, replica game between the old Negro Leagues, when you had the Spartanburg Sluggers and Spartanburg and the Greenville Black Spinners. Uh, each team represented their, uh, of course, particular team, and, uh, the Sluggers won. So if you caught that, Spartanburg won. But to say all that, uh, uh, my wife is in the back and I think of her father that has been here through all of these changes. He was actually an original Spartanburg Slugger and played baseball, um, uh, for the old Negro League, and he was there signing autographs, and it was just so, so cool, really, to see the kids, you know, running up to him, not really knowing, but just interested in what we have in Spartanburg and where we moved from, that we had a team that didn't play one another once upon a time, but changed. But change, change. And now we remember those days. We always going to remember the past, but we have to look forward to the future, have to look forward. And there's changes, changes change. But again, Archie means, if you want to talk to Archie, go by the barbershop. He'll tell you everything about the Sluggers and Satchel Paige and Hank Aaron and all those in between. But he will tell you that his first pitch was farther than mine, which it wasn't. But anyway, entertain, we need to...
Wouldn't take much, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion.
Exactly. All in favor? All right, thank you. Representative Henderson-Meyer, it's good to see you tonight. I'm sorry.
I was getting ready to say something, but if I had said something...